Welcome, everybody. This is Bob Allen from K A D Y T V dot com. The trusted media source in Ventura County. And today we are going to have a virtual town hall meeting for Mohammed Hassan, who is running for the District Three Board seat at the local water district. And as hostess for today's show, we have Dana Garcia. So Dana, if you'll take it on, we can get started right from here.
Okay, very good. So the first thing we're going to ask everybody just to mute their microphones. And then I will call on people if you just want to raise your hand with the raise hand button, or you can wave at me and I'll give you a holler and I'll check in with everybody too and make sure that all of your questions are answered. So Mohammed, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And thank you for everybody that are present. My name is Mohammed Hassan. I am currently serving in Division Three of the United Water Conservation District. And I'm a director. And I would like to be continue same work for another four years. That's the full term. I served only the half term. Now I have experience, knowledge and ideas and so on. That makes me very unique. And I think that will come out by the questions that you'll be asking. I have degrees, I've written books. All those things will come out with the questions. That's the purpose of the virtual town hall meeting. And I appreciate K A D Y T V and our moderator, Deena Piccian. Thank you.
Okay, so I know that Mike has been waiting to ask a question, so we can go ahead and start with you, if that's okay?
Yes.
Mike McBain?
Mike McBain, that's me. I look like my name is Carmel, but I'm using Carmel's computer. So Mike McBain has been a citizen of Ventura since 1977. I grew up and was born in L.A. Water has always been a problem in Southern California. And the question I have for you, Mohammed, is D cell, is D cell something that would be an option? It seems to me it would. And the L.A. Times came out about a week ago with an article about Dana Point getting a D cell plant.
Okay. Yes, it's a very good question and let me tell you a little bit background of what we're doing.
I think Stan needs to mute because I think there's a lot of background noise possibly. Is there a mute button for you? Does anybody have a way to mute people? I don't know if there's a moderator that has a way to mute out. Just making it very difficult to hear.
Yeah, Stan, if you would go to a little if you go to a place that you can do that. Okay, let me try to answer the question, although there's a little noise from one of the participants. And the question that you asked is about D cell. D cell is nothing new, as you know. We have known about desalination for a long time. What is D cell? Let me explain that a little bit more. Cell is actually the salinity of the water is taken away by by we have reverse osmosis that we do. Reverse osmosis is a process that regular osmosis you reverses. In a regular osmosis, a molecule goes from one, from the membrane, from one side to the other by pressure that we put in. Same thing the other way, so that salinity will be gone and we would have pure, almost pure water. That's what reverse osmosis is. And we've had this for a long, long time. How, for example, if you, if you've been in Santa Barbara, they were almost ready to start a D cell plant almost 15 years ago. But things changed. They had plenty of water, so they didn't want to go for that anymore. And, and it was almost built. I even visited it at that time. But D cell is, remains to be a good alternative for the drought that we are having. In many different ways, we have gone quite further, such as you would have the need for D cell at that time, you have to realize that it's very highly energy consumption. So you cannot have too much energy if you use it for D cell purpose. Reverse osmosis, then it would become something like the cost would be very high. That cost is the prime, prime reason that you don't see a lot of D cell facilities. But wherever it can compete, then its energy cost is not horrendous, then they would have D cell. And we are having a sort of a D cell facility. United has, is proposing and we're quite far on that with the Navy, the United States Navy and Point Magoo and Port Onimi, the base that we have. We are working with them to create a, a brackish water facility, not full salinity. Full salinity is very high in salt. Brackish means they're not very, very, as much as ocean water. So that's a lot easier, less energy, and that's being done. And we would be putting that water that we would get for reversing the saltwater intrusion that comes into Ventura County in that coastal areas. So it is being proposed right now. Next question.
Okay, and then I think Mark might have been waiting to ask a question.
Go ahead. Do you have thoughts on how to improve United Water operations? Things you are working on with the other board members?
That is a very good question, too. United Water District has been around for 70 years or more. So they are, they know mostly what they're doing right now. And the facility is such, their facilities are such that they have planned all these things for some time. For example, the United, if you attended the, we had a sustainability seminar two days ago. And all top people have presented it. And we mentioned to everybody that what is being done at United for sustainability. And for example, you may be familiar with, we have the Lake Piru. The dam there is called Santa Felicia Dam, Santa Felicia Dam. So that dam, we are looking at the feasibility of utilizing more by reducing the silt that's behind it. Those are some of the things that are being worked upon. Then we have the, another dam called Freeman Diversion Dam, which diverts water from Santa Clara River to the to the fields that we have, where we ponds that we have, where we have the water coming in and it settles down. And after it goes into the aquifer, then we pump it so it would be, would be filtered. And we would allow that water to go. That kind of operations are being done. And our operations, as, as you know, I have taught water and wastewater and for operators and others, especially in Ventura College. And operation wise, we're doing very well. Some of the modeling that are being done. You remember, I, I graduated from the University of Iowa. And Iowa has one of the top research facility for modeling about what needs to be done for Santa Clara River. And that's being done by United right now. It's very, very expensive facility, but it's being done right now. And that's what we're doing. And operation wise, I think we're doing very, if not the max, we're doing very, very well that I can see. I hope I answered your question. I can go on to the next.
Okay, I think Jim Stewart is waiting to ask a question.
Hey Mohammed, I was wondering how you could describe your experience is important to helping the water district solve the most pressing problems facing us in Ventura County on water issues.
That's a very broad question. Thank you, Jim. There are many, again, I hate to mention this more than once, that I'm only one board member out of seven. So, and these seven people, these six people have been there for 30 years. So they have their own ideas that they're implementing. And what I'm doing is putting in some of my ideas, some of my thoughts and ideas in there and slowly getting them to understand that, hey, you're doing very well. But even the best can be better. And those are some of the things to do and why. And it takes a little time, Jim, to have them understand it. And they have been involved for quite some time. So that's basically I'm doing because I don't want to antagonize people. It, I wouldn't achieve anything. I'm trying to put it in such a way so that they would see the benefits of some of the things. And frankly, some of the things that they're doing seems very good at that time. I don't oppose it. I join in. So it's a matter of giving them ideas. What I'm, for example, what I'm really trying to tell them is United Water Conservation District, remember, the word conservation is in it, was formed a long, long time ago. At that time, conservation was very good. But now they, there's a little bit more things that are, that are there. It's called innovation. They have not gone through innovative, innovative things because it takes a long time. The process, government process and so on, takes a long time. So again, they're finally understanding that in addition to conservation, we have to do innovation. And I, I appreciate that they're not closed in their ideas minds, so I can approach them. Yes, it is slowly happening so that some of the knowledge, I, you're right. I've been in Ventura County water system, water industry in every capacity that you can imagine since 1974. That's 48 years. And so it would be totally wasted if they didn't utilize that. And fortunately, they're listening for that, to that.
So you're saying you're able to bring some new ideas, which is really going to help. How, how is that going to make a difference in our water supply in Ventura County?
There are several ways it can happen. Number one, we're going through drought. The how we could have more water supply, how we could have more, that, some of the things. Remember, I wrote a book on California's water problem, drought. The name of the book is Doubt is Not a Four Letter Word. You may have seen it in Amazon Books. But anyway, the, in there, I have some ideas about what Ocean Foresters, what we have talked about, we put that information in there. But mostly, it's whenever you think about drought, you, you see that people are excited about it. When there is a drought situation, they need to solve it. But the minute there's a little rain, they think that's solving the problem. We are in a mega drought and we cannot just see a little rain and say it's okay. But that's the nature of the beast. People think only about drought when they are, they're in real drought situation, they, they see water. So we have to go beyond that. We have to have facilities available to create those opportunities to have new water coming in and that they are going in. Then everything, many things like that, the, as opportunities come, I join in and I put in some of my ideas and suggestions to implement here in Ventura County. I love this county. I love this ability to, to share, share the things. And that's why I do.
Well, and my final question is, are you in it for the money? How much are you getting paid as a director?
No, it's not a paid position, so they
So this is totally volunteer? You're doing this just for us of Ventura County as a service?
Yes, it's a
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Mohammed.
Or if you attend a meeting, they'll pay you a few hundred dollars, a few dollars. And that's, that's about all that kind of thing. But it's basically volunteer. You have to put in so much effort for this thing. If you like it, if you love something, you do it. That's what it is.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service.
Okay. Dana? Any other question?
Sorry about that. My thing went a little haywire there. Is there anybody else on that? I don't see any. Somebody else has, I think David has a, like a clapping hand up, but did you have a question also, David?
Yes, I do. I couldn't forget to get the hand up there.
I had the same problem in the beginning. It's fine.
So that I've known Mohammed for a long time, you know, probably since the seventies and have dealt with him on lots of different things in the water industry. We both have been in similar industries. Like no, Mohammed, what would you like the voters to know about your experience as design engineer, expert witness, author, county regulator, agency water manager and, and industry speaker at, at conferences? That'll help them better understand the, the that you can make the informed decisions and help provide leadership in future water issues.
That's very long and very detailed question. Let me answer it this way. You, I see people here have a background that they may remember a, and a gentleman who was an attorney, his name was Judge Bork. He was, he was he was getting, he was trying to be nominated and everybody was fighting, bringing out questions. And one of the things that I really liked is about Judge Bork. He said, look, you always want to know about me, et cetera. But all my opinions, all my articles and so on are all written down. So I am not, what I will just say, what I have said before and what are my opinions are all there written down. And David, fortunately, I have been in Ventura County since 1974. And those of you that know me, each and every newspaper in Ventura County, even the throwaway newspapers and little newsletters have all published one or two articles or more about me, about my thoughts, ideas and suggestions. Some of them have profiles on me like many, many others. So it's, it's all there. I can't, I'm not going to, I'm not a politician. So I'm not going to say that I will do this for you, et cetera, et cetera. It's what I am, has been already there, has, has been done, and I will continue that. It's, that's the most important thing people should know. You're not getting somebody by re-electing that promises everything and can't deliver. I am more of a person who you know, who you already have seen what I have achieved. So it's for the people, I've written the book, Drought is Not a Four Letter Word. That is written so simply that a, a, is a person with no technical background can comprehend everything about water that they need to know. It's like a beginner information, but it allows you to understand what's going on and how to get involved. So it's a citizen involvement thing. I want to keep it simple, simple, although your question had so many things. But my answer is, I would like to, people to know that things that are necessary for Ventura County for the future of water is what they can expect me to, to interject in the policy of the United Water Conservation District. That's what I can say. Dana?
Very good. Thank you, David. Is anybody else want to ask a question? Just kind of wave at us if there's anybody else.
I see Stan for
See, see, did he wave or is he, he looks like he's on a
Torfe has, David Torfe has a handout, you know, he's, he wants to ask a question. You see it? David Torfe?
Hi, this is David Torfe. Mohammed, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the United Water Conservation District?
Well, again, in every organization, I think the most important challenges for the people that they are serving, for them to fully support and understand what's going on. And United is not out of that, everybody, they have to convince all the people that the projects that are happening today are beneficial to them. And they, they do, they, like I said, they had a sustainability summit that, that happened only two days ago. And there were so many people, about quite a few hundred people that attended it. And they are very proud of the things being achieved to, to provide sustainability of the groundwater. Mostly, United deals with groundwater situation and that has been provided by them. And the challenge is to keep everybody interested because we are getting quite a few million dollars in grants and so on by convincing everybody. And all the lawmakers and anybody else, they are providing the, the money that would be needed. And we, we may need more if we want to do much more. And it's important to keep everybody together. That's my answer.
Okay, very good. Oh, Stan, I think Stan's raising his hand. You have a question, Stan?
You, Stan, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself, Stan. How, how does he unmute himself? His, from his cellphone?
At the bottom of your cellphone screen, there'll be a little microphone button that says mute. You can mute or unmute.
Okay, I mute. Is it I mute or is it those?
No, it's Stan. He, he looks a little frozen there too, so I don't know if he's having some trouble.
Yes, Stan is having some trouble, but you explained it before the meeting started that there's, those three dots.
Yes, but I think that he, some of these people were not on when
No, he is okay. Then we can hear you now.
Hello?
Yes. Go ahead.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
No?
Yes, we can.
No? Can't hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
When you get elected, what are your plans for the next four years to increase water supply to Ventura County? Do you agree that the desalination plants are a good investment? Or what do you, how, and what do you plan on doing to increase the water supply in Ventura and probably rest of Southern California? Because I guess we're all connected.
Very good. Very good question. Let me take that question in there. I think
Did you hear that?
Yes, yes, I did. And let me answer your question, Stan. I think you had a chance to look at my book in which with Ocean Foresters, we suggested that we use a sort of a desalination process using the Salt and Sea. I think you're very familiar with that. And that we suggested because of the overall situation has to be done. In local situation that United is, we can do the things that we're doing right now. There is groundwater, all basins are being managed by Sustainability Groundwater Sustainability Act that has been formed. And all the GSAs, Geothermal Sustainability Act and the plans have been formulated. So it's time to put them together and you will have sustainable water quality situation, water accessibility situation for everybody. That's what is happening right now. And you, you also mentioned desalination. Definitely, I mentioned that we would, United States Navy, we should be able to serve the base of Port Onimi. When we do the joint project with the Navy, at that time, we would not only use, provide good water to Navy, but also we will be utilizing some of that to put a barrier for this saltwater intrusion that I mentioned before. Dana?
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Mike, you can, Mike McBain has had another question, it seems like. Mike, do you? No, Mark Capron?
A question for me?
Any, any other question you have?
No.
Okay, Mark had his hands. You can ask him.
Yes. Relative to your opponent in this election, do you have different thoughts on how United could be coordinating with the cities and the county? Or, or if you don't know anything about your opponent, which I don't either. Just thoughts on how United could better coordinate with cities and counties?
Did you, did I hear you first about opponent, something of that nature? No. Okay, in that case, Mark?
I think, I'm sorry, we need to ask Stan to if he can mute one more time for us.
Go ahead.
Dan, can you mute, can you mute out for a minute? Or if, I don't know if Bob or Mohammed
Stan, you need to mute your, yourself. You have to keep asking. Now you can ask him.
There he goes.
There we go. Excellent. Mark, I, I, what I heard is that opponent thing you brought up. Let me answer, let me take, I'm not going to talk anything about my opponent. The only thing I can mention to you is that I have about 48, about half a century of water knowledge, education. I have a couple of master's degrees from the University of Iowa, et cetera, et cetera. So I have been involved in water. So I never talk about common sense solution for water. It's, common sense is not going to solve the problems that we have. You need an expert to be in the field. You need a person that can think, you know, a person that can see the future. You can, you need to have somebody that can provide the ideas and suggestion that will be necessary. So that I can say is the, is the thing that I would like to continue doing that. And in regards to the involvement of cities and others that you're talking about, yes, a concerted effort is being made. I have been involved with the United Water District for a while. And I have been able to mention to them that, hey, because they, they are very proud people. They, they believe in, they're doing quite a bit of you know, public publicity, public information things, but they need to do more. For example, they were not members of Camarillo, Oxnard Chamber or Ventura Chamber. All these are happening. I'm pushing them to be involved with, so that constituents know what they're doing. It's, and get involved. That's, that's the thing that I have been able to work with them and it's happening. Hunum, you have a question? Did you, yeah?
I'm trying to learn. So maybe next time.
Okay, Mark, you have another question, right? Or, oh, you said you're done.
Thumbs up. He's thumbs up. I think he liked your answer to the last question. Okay, anybody else? I know we're running a little over, so I just want to make sure if anybody has any more questions, we get them in. I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, you have to keep your answer really short. In a nutshell, what makes you the best candidate for the job?
Boy, that's a very uh important question. Well. As I see it, there are. Board members and new people getting elected and so on. I think it should be bringing in new ideas, new things and so on. And they should have a complete balance in the board members. The, you have to have uh. Uh, one, one type of professional, another professional. If you bring in everybody, that then you get better idea, better suggestion, and better decisions are ma- made. That's what I'm trying to create, let them see that, hey, there are other things possible than what you have been doing all the time. And uh I'm, I I feel that I I'm the force that they are slowly. Accepting so that they're able to take all the suggestions and ideas that are there. And whether they take the idea or not, it should be considered. That's what is happening. And I am able to uh without antagonizing anybody, without creating any problem. I'm able to get through their thinking process that, hey, there is more, there is much more that can be done. And they have accepted my ability to bring that up. Uh, they they even say that in board meetings and so on, how how much they appreciate that I've said something. So uh it's it's it feels good. Remember, like, uh, one of you asked if it's a paid position. It's not a paid position, but it feels good to be able to give your ideas and suggestions and see that they're considering it. That's the gratification that I have. I feel good that somebody listens because I have so much experience. And I'm able to share that with them. That's what, why I think I'm the best candidate.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here and asking your questions. Thank you, Mohammed. Thank you, Bob, and turn it over to you, Bob.